Call meeting back to order. Welcome we all to the Monday, March 7th meeting of the Board of Select in the town of Falmouth. The Board has just returned from Executive Session. We're now in Open Session. I'll invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is to invoke the affirmation of appointment of Highway Superintendent, Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Board will recall, we had longtime Highway Superintendent John Lyons retire recently, and we went through a formal search process, and I'm delighted to recommend, for concurrence of the Board, that our Highway -- the position of Highway Superintendent be filled by Jim Grady. Jim has been a supervisor in Public Works since 2007. He's done a very commendable job, and I'm delighted to be able to make that recommendation to the Board. He's worked with all his colleagues in Public Works and is well-prepared to take over this responsibility, and I'm particularly delighted that we have such a capable and qualified individual in-house who has applied for this position and can step into it with distinction. Jim is with us here tonight, as is, of course, Public Works Director Ray Jack and Deputy Public Works Director Peter McConerty, and we're pleased to have Jim with us if the Board would care to have him make a few comments as well.
Absolutely. Mr. Grady, if you'd like to say a few words?
Hello. I just wanted to say that I'm very excited to be given this opportunity. I've been with Public Works a while. I believe in public service. I take a lot of pride in it. I believe that I have the skills it's going to take to take this department into the future, at the same time, you know, making some changes and developing some things that'll provide a better service for the people, the residents, as well as the visitors. And again, I'm excited, you know, I really am. I can't thank you enough, especially like to thank Mr. Suso, Mr. Jack, for considering me for this position.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You take a motion to affirm this appointment?
Still moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Congratulations and welcome to the position. We look forward to seeing you move forward in that. It's great to have someone coming from within the program moving forward then. Other personnel announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple other items that I wanted to update the Board on and make some public updates on. I'm pleased to have longtime Assistant Recreation Director Joe Lenick step up and is now serving as Acting Director of Recreation, succeeding Helen Kennedy, who recently retired, as we're aware. Also, Amy Lowell has been appointed as the Acting Wastewater Superintendent, given the retirement of our Superintendent Jerry Potamus. And another development, I have designated Jim Brandalini as our interim Building Commissioner. I had mentioned to the Board and mentioned publicly several weeks ago that we would be appointing an interim Building Commissioner to succeed our longtime Building Commissioner Aladio Gore upon his retirement on March 18th. I don't want to retire Aladio before his time, so he has a couple weeks yet, but all too short, given his distinction, distinctive service. But Jim will be taking over as interim Building Commissioner upon Aladio's retirement, and he will be serving in that capacity on a temporary basis as we complete the search process for a permanent successor for Aladio Gore. We're very pleased to have a person of the background and experience of Mr. Brandalini step in. He's a Certified Building Commissioner, and he is among several individuals with whom I spoke, and we had an interview with him as well to determine his ability to step in. He is well-experienced as a Building Commissioner on the Cape and is in a position to step in and provide some interim coverage for us. In addition, we're going to be working with staff members to make certain that administratively all matters move forward in the Building Department. Also, I want to thank Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, who's going to assist with the day-to-day administrative issues that may arise, things like vacation and payroll in the Building Department, to assist, again, only during that interim period while we complete the search for a permanent successor. And as I've already noted, we are accepting applications from qualified individuals for the Building Commissioner position. So that concludes my update on personnel matters. Mr. Chairman, members of Board.
Any other announcements from the Board? I have three. Mr. Patterson, Ms. Flynn, and I were there at the graduation of the Junior Police Academy at Morse Pond School this afternoon, 3:00, when we had 34 graduates, and it was a fantastic little event. We also have two Falmouth basketball teams that are still playing in the MIA Basketball Tournament. The Falmouth Academy Girls are playing tonight at 7:45 at Great New Bedford Voak, and tomorrow the Falmouth High School Girls are playing against Oliver Ames at 6:00 at the Brockton High School. The two teams did play against each other about a week and a half ago. It was a great game. The Falmouth High School Girls won, but one of the great things that occurred after it is the two teams that have had five games since then, and they've each gone to each other's team games to cheer them on, and it's been a really wonderful community event going on with that. Any other announcements? Public comment? If anyone would like to comment on something that's not on our agenda this evening, you may do so at this time. Please limit your comment to under -- to two minutes or less. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our minutes. I just do want to point out, we do have two hearings tonight, one scheduled at 7:30 and one 7:55, so if we have to change things in our order, just to be aware, we do have to get those hearings at the set time. We have the Public Session Minutes from February 11th, 2016. Any changes?
I move approval. I submit it.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve and submitted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Next, the Public Session Minutes of February 22nd. Any changes?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, February 22nd, if you looked under Open Session Number Five, Public Comment, I think that should be Jane Abbott.
Okay. So both lines, it says Atkinson. We'll change that to Abbott. A-B-B-O-T-T, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other changes?
Oh, yes, on page five, in the -- under this second bullet, or excuse me, Item Two, 1, 2, 3, in the fourth paragraph, right in the middle of the sentence, the concern is that the Farley Bog will go feral. I don't think that's the correct spelling.
F-E-R-A-L, is what we're looking for.
Yeah, and it also shows up at the end of that paragraph again, and it should be obviously lowercase. It's not a proper name. And then if I could look at one other.
Sure.
Risk of being picky. In that same Item Two, in the three more paragraphs under it, it says, "Key considerations of the following two alternatives: Falmouth and Mashpee declare Farley Bog surplus municipal land." And I don't necessarily think we should necessarily put down to be acquired by Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. Is it not going to be a lease as a potential?
Well, there are two options. Option one was that they actually would be acquired by the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. Option two is there'd be a long-term lease, and that's what it says in the minutes.
Okay.
I'll take a motion to approve as amended.
Still moved. Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Back to February 11th, Executive Session. Item One, Collective Bargaining.
Move approval and not to release.
Um, I think we actually --
Can we?
With the collective bargain, I think we cannot release at this point.
Yes.
We can?
It's been negotiated.
All right, then I'll amend my motion to also release.
Motion to approve and release.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Item Two, Litigation, Wind Turban Litigation, Anderson Case.
I guess so. Edit the next to the last paragraph, the attorney's name is not Mark Dobrowski, but Bobrowski.
So the D should be a B?
Yes, but isn't it B-A-B-R-O or B-O?
I believe it's B-O.
And my second comment is that we only had two Executive Session Agenda Items listed, and yet we have an Executive Session Three, and I think that two and three ought to be merged. And so we might want to hold that and look at it.
I don't think that -- there was not a third item.
There was not a third item on that Executive Session.
So those minutes should just be considered as Item Two.
That's correct.
Okay. Someone with that correction? Basically, just cross off Executive Session Three on Page Three.
That'd be fine with that. And then appropriately edit it, just the -- there's some redundancy in it. So I would move approval of Executive Session Two as amended and not to release.
Second.
Motion, a second to amend, approve as amended and not release. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it. And then we have the Executive Session February 22nd. This is on the Wind Turban Litigation, Anderson Case and the Fund for our Case.
I would suggest another edit. I think we can do this. In the -- under One, in the third paragraph, it says, second line, six years, but I think it should be six months. But I defer to anybody else's interpretation.
I don't think that's right. Is that the same as slouches? No?
That's what the issue was. That's the issue.
That could be the slouches issue.
I thought six years was the right. I thought six years was correct.
I think six is correct.
Okay. Never mind.
Excuse me. I voted on the first of the minutes on the 22nd, and I wasn't here then, so I should not have voted.
So back on the Public Session Minutes?
It was 11.
On the 22nd.
On the Public Session Minutes.
That's the one we're on right now.
No, we're on Executive right now. I voted previously.
Oh, on the regular meeting.
So you'd like to change your vote to an abstention on the --
Yes, exactly.
-- in the Public Session Minutes on the 22nd.
And I will not vote this time. Okay?
All right.
Can I move approval?
Go ahead.
I move approval of the Executive Session Minutes of Monday, February 22nd, and not to release.
Second.
Mr. Patterson, motion, and Ms. Moran, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention, Ms. Moran. That takes care of our minutes. Next, we have a special one-day liquor license for the West Falmouth Library for Saturday, March 12th, and Sunday, March 13th.
I move approval.
Second.
Do we have anyone from the USFAL Library who'd like to describe this event for us?
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Murder mystery, if anyone's interested. Sounds exciting.
Come to the podium, please.
Sure.
Wasn't expecting to, but I'd be happy to. This is a murder mystery actually written by my wife, Lisa Rudi, and this is a fundraiser for the West Falmouth Library, and I happen to be -- two of us happen to be acting in it, too. So it's a fun event. We did it last year, and it just brings out a lot of crowds, and it's a good fundraiser.
I assume if you find the USFAL Library website, you can get more information about it.
Yep. It's westfalmouthlibrary.org. I think my name is Peter Cook. I forgot to introduce myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Next is a special one-day liquor license for the Alex Holmes Memorial Concert. This is at the Marshall County Fairgrounds, the Cape Cod Fairgrounds, on Saturday, May 21st, 2016. Do we have anybody for the applicant?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the 21st day of May, 2016. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Next is a grant application to NOAA for the Kuna Meset River Restoration Project. Dr. Gutfelter. Would you like to tell us a little bit about this project?
Good evening. I actually brought show and tell, but I know you don't want show and tell tonight. You have a busy meeting, so I'll do that the next time.
Okay.
We're applying to the NOAA National Marine Fisheries Community Base Restoration Program Coastal and Marine Habitat Grant Solicitation for $500,000 worth of federal funds, and if we're successful, this would begin in September of this year. And it will be matched by an equal amount of funds from Division of Ecological Restoration will be putting in $120,000. The grant that we have from Massachusetts Environmental Trust, we have a $60,000 grant, but $40,000 will be during the period of this grant. We're waiting to hear on a -- well, we're on the shortlist for a $50,000 grant from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. The town will be doing in-kind services of about $200,000, including DPW and Division of Marine and Environmental Services and the Conservation Department. And volunteer work will contribute somewhere between, and we're working out the numbers now, but between $70,000 and $100,000 a year of volunteer labor. And the purpose of this grant is to do the construction work, remove Lower Bog Dam, reroute the river through Lower Bog, which will make the river longer and more sinuous, and then to do the design and permitting work to begin to restore the bogs upriver. There are two dates that I want people to know about. On March 23rd, which is a Wednesday night for our Conservation Commission meeting, Beth Lambert, who's our Program Manager with Division of Ecological Restoration, this -- I'm a lot more nervous when I'm on this side of the board. She'll be giving a talk, and it will be, I call it, River Restoration 101, the principles of how you design improving rivers. And then she'll talk specifically about how those principles are used in the design that we have for the Kuna Meset. And then on April 2nd, from 10 to 12, April 2nd is a Saturday, Nick Nelson, who's been our engineer on this project all along the way, will be giving a field trip out on -- out at the site. So if anybody would like to learn more about it, I just want the town to realize that when we actually get to the restoration project process with shovels in the ground with -- well, he's not here now, but Mike was here. When we have DPW equipment out on the bogs, things are going to look a little bit chaotic for a couple of months, but as Beth said, one of her colleagues at DER says, "A lot of restoration has to do with Mother Nature and Father Time." So we're really looking forward to -- I'm really looking forward to actually moving ahead on this project. I feel like I've spent my life coming before you talking about grant applications.
I have a couple questions, Beth.
Okay.
On the first page, you talk about the river herring and the American eel as being managed species.
Well, all species are managed.
By DEP or by concert -- or by whom? Anybody?
By the federal government.
Federal government.
By the state government. By the local government.
Okay, and what does that --
Chuck is our herring manager. Chuck's our local manager.
So what does that mean for you when you're dealing with managed species? Do you have additional reporting or something?
Oh, well, what it means is, and this would have been one of the pictures that I would have shown you, had I shown you slide show tonight.
I saw your slides.
But we have a technical committee that consists of somebody from the feds, the NOAA Restoration Group out of Rhode Island, somebody from Division of Marine Fisheries, that's Brad Chase, somebody from Fish and Wildlife, Steve Hurley, and I just, now that you've brought that up, I just want to mention Steve Hurley. Steve Hurley's worked on the Kuna Meset since the early '90s, and one of the projects that he's been working on in the Kuna Meset is the reintroduction of brook trout that used to be -- there used to be a salter trout population in the Kuna Meset, and our goal, ultimate goal, is to restore that. But he's reintroduced brook trout from the Mashpee and the Quashnet, or the Childs and the Quashnet, anyway, two of the rivers to the east. He's done it over three years, and it's been, you know, it's exceeded his wildest expectations as far as, you know, not only have they lived, but they've been reproducing in the river. So that's a very good sign for us. And I just wanted to quickly tell you, there are two other projects that are going on that, one is the, this is a mouthful, Botanical Club of Cape Cod and the Islands is working with the New England Wildflower Society on a project to collect seed so that restoration -- so like the cost for seed for this project is like 70 years. so like the cost for seed for this project is like 70 or 80, $70,000. No, actually, $7,000 to $8,000. But this group will help us with the botanical club members, and we'll have a couple of workdays this summer and next summer to collect the seed we need for, for reseeding. And then the second project that the Kuna Meset River Trust started, and Charlie's here, yeah, Charlie Cooper and Linda Deegan and a couple of young scientists from Hui have, and this is what was going to be my show and tell, have pit tagged 1%, about 500 of the approximately 70,000 herring that passed last year, and they have markers up the river so they can see how long it takes to get up, and then how long the fish stay in Kuna Meset Lake, or some of them go to Flax Pond, and then when they come back out. Now, some of them don't make it because Osprey get them or, or, or gull gets them. And the other thing that's critical, and it's critical with, and I don't know if those of you might have read through this, it's, it's, we actually have quantitative data to show that these partial barriers to fish movement really do have an impact on the movement. So some of the fish go up in the, in the evening, then they come back down, then they go up, then they come back down, and then it takes them a third time up Lower Bog before they can pass through the culvert. So it's, it's very exciting, and both state and federal fisheries biologists, this is the largest river herring tagging project like this that's, that's been done, and this will be continuing.
Okay, I have one other piece to them. You also mentioned the socio-economic benefits such as passive recreation, small seating, viewing, outdoor education pavilions, which I think is great, you know, because it is an opportunity for learning for, for people in town. Is that a requirement of the grant, or is that an enhancement to the grant?
Well, I'll tell you how this came about. I, I really, I'm, I'm interested in land use history. I used to be in the Virgin Islands, and you have the same, you have the same issues where, where how land is used changes over time, and often it's economically driven. So, so I actually knew a lot about the history of the Kuna Meset, as do lots of people in town. And it has a very important role in the industrial use of, of waterways, you know, through the centuries. And so in thinking about this project, early on, we had the, the granite blocks from the, from the mill, from the woolen mill that was there. And so I thought, well, wouldn't it be a great idea to have some kind of a, an amphitheater for outdoor education? But then this summer, I worked with, I think I might have told you, worked with two interns and with Alex from, Alex Brandt from Conservation and Jack Sadar from 300 Committee. And we've mapped a trail down the river, and there, there are 10 places along this trail where we're going to have a kiosk. And one half of the kiosk will have a storyboard, like the storyboards on the bike path, one half will have a storyboard about cultural history, and the other half will be a natural history story.
Okay, we're going to actually have to interrupt and come back to you in just a minute.
Okay.
We have a liquor license hearing scheduled for 7:30. So we'll come right back to you in just a minute, please.
Or, or you don't have to come back.
Well, we do have to see if there's anyone else who wants to comment on this.
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, we have an application for a change of license type from wine and malt to all alcohol. This is Family Ventures doing business as Jimmy Brown's Cafe. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Family Ventures, Inc., LLC, doing business as Jimmy Brown's Cafe, has applied for a change in their annual wine and malt liquor license to an annual all-alcoholic license located at 339 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, Mass. A hearing will be held in the Selectance Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, March 7th, 2016, at 7:30 PM on the above application. For the applicant, Mr. Long, if you would come to the podium and introduce yourself and explain why you'd like to switch your liquor license.
Hi, I'm Chris Long. My family runs the restaurant. My dad and my brother are here with me. Basically, we've been there about three years now, with just beer and wine, and we've just had, a number of our customers have told us that they would like to be able to have a mixed drink. And so, you know, basically, we decided, well, we should try to do that then, just to accommodate our customers. And that's, that's really what it's about.
Any questions from the board?
Just a question. What type of a menu do you have normally?
I call it eclectic American, which is, it's, we have burgers and sandwiches, and then also some saute dishes. Kind of try to keep it small, like a, you know, cafe-type menu.
Chris, Ms. Muffett?
Are your employees tips certified?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yep.
That handles alcohol?
That's right.
Okay.
Is anyone here who'd like to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to this change of liquor license? All right, seeing no public comment.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Ms. Muffett?
Could you tell me the hours of operation?
Right now, we open, we're closed on Mondays. Tuesday through Thursday, right now, we open just for dinner, 5 to 9. And then through the weekend, we open for lunch and dinner, 11:30. During the summertime, we stay open an hour later, until 10 o'clock.
And what hours are you asking for the...
Well, I'd forgotten about that. We were talking about that on the way here. If we could, we would like to have the, I think right now, our license goes to 11:00 PM. If we could extend that, we would like to do that, mainly with an eye towards, if we ever wanted to sell the place, we're thinking that realtors told us that would be better. We're not planning on that. We're in the process of renewing our lease right now.
Well, unfortunately, liquor license hearings are very specific, and the only thing we can consider tonight is the change of kind.
Well, that's fine. We're not really worried about any...
If you want to change the hours.
We're not planning on being open past 10:00 anyways.
You'd have to come back and change the hours on the hearing.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Discussion of the board?
I move approval of the application to expand the alcohol license to include all alcohol and beverages.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the change of liquor license. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Gladfelter, if you would come back. Is there, just to see if there are any questions from the board for you?
I won't ask anymore, Betsy.
Actually, I want to finish a question.
Oh, okay.
Lou just came in, and I want to add one other thing that's going to happen, going to start, well, Lou started it, and that is, part of this herring tagging is, is an adopt-a-fish, and if anybody wants to know about it, they can contact Conservation, and I'll have them contact Charlie, I think is, is keeping track, he's, of this. But Lou has introduced the adopt-a-fish into the schools. And so I asked him the other day, we met out here, and I said, well, you know, don't, don't the school kids want to kind of know what this is about, and that, don't they want to see what the fish look like? And he said, well, yeah, you know, why don't you send me a paragraph? So I did. And the next day, he said, oh, well, Mullin Hall would like us to come in and talk to them. So hopefully, we'll get, we'll get to do it, and we'll have a, a community that's quite well aware of herring biology.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? Charlie?
Charles Cooper. I'm one of the trustees of the Kuna Meset River Trust. I wanted to expand on the answer to your question, Selectman Flynn. Not only have these fish managed the river herring, there's currently a moratorium on taking them because they are, they've been considered for listing under the Endangered Species Act. So they need all the help they can get. That's all.
Well, thank you. No, I just wanted to say that, I mean, the Kuna Meset River is a very special place in Falmouth and has a long, long history. And I think that what they're doing, what Betsy and her group are doing with this grant is really remarkable. And I think the more people in, in town, especially the younger people, who can learn more about the river and, and, and what it means to the town, is, is really helpful, helpful for them.
Okay. Do we need to approve the grant application? Is this something we approve now, or is this something you come back later for our signatures?
Well, we're asking for a vote at the board.
Yeah. Well, I would move approval of the grant.
Second.
Motion, a second, for the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. You can come back with another application. Keep coming back, Betsy.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Next item is to approve the Comcast license for cable wires installation to the Falmouth Commodores Broadcast Booth.
Mr. Chairman, this one's pretty straightforward. The Commodores are just asking, they'll, they'll incur the expense, they're asking for your permission to do so. I move approval.
Second.
Okay, can we also include authorization of Mr. Suso to sign the agreement?
Yes. Include that in the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next is a access agreement for Shorewood Drive for groundwater testing purposes. You'll remember that we discussed this already during the other parcel at Tarpon, and this is just the other one on dealing with number zero Shorewood Drive.
Move approval. Second.
Any public discussion on this? Sure, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it. Next is to vote to authorize the Buzzards Bay Coalition's use of the Falmouth Town Flag for their events, for a specific event, I believe. I think you have that as in your handout, that they would like to be able to display the Falmouth Flag at their headquarters as part of the project for the saving of the bay. Mr. Patterson?
But I believe this is a permanent display of the flag.
Yes, you are correct.
To indicate that Falmouth is part of this coalition all around Buzzards Bay, it's not, not just one event.
You're right.
And it is inside the building, and it's, you know, it's part of the communities that surround Buzzards Bay, and I know we have many citizens that identify with the Buzzards Bay Coalition and contribute to it, so it seems appropriate to me. And be one of 12 flags of all the towns in the Buzzards Bay area. I'm sorry?
It'd be one of the 12 towns represented.
Exactly. One of 12.
Mr. Chairman, case and objective one item. We're talking about needing a certain type of file, et cetera, et cetera. So subject to the board's concurrence, we'll, we'll explore whether we have exactly the details they need to do what they're asking to do. And I, subject only to that, we'll follow the dictates of the board.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I just would think a scannable artwork is what they've specified. Why wouldn't a digital picture of our flag work in a situation like that?
I would hope it would as well.
That'd be pretty straightforward, so.
I think we'll be able to get that figured out.
Yeah, exactly. I move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second, to authorize the Buzzards Bay Coalition's use of the Falmouth Town Flag. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Next is to approve agreements for sidewalk easements on Courier Road.
This is a friendly taking, I believe.
Yep. This is a 159-161 Regis Road?
Yep. These residents are actually encouraging the, the creation of a sidewalk along Courier Road using their property. It seems a very straightforward thing to me. So I would move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. All right, well, our next hearing is until 7:55, so we'll move on to our next item on our agenda on the business, and this is to approve the Nobbska Light License with the Coast Guard. It's been a long time coming. We actually have two different documents. One is a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Falmouth and Friends of Nobbska Light, and our hope tonight is to be able to at least agree to both of these two documents, and then hope to schedule a more formal signing of the documents actually at the lighthouse itself as a formal ceremony, but at least to authorize that we are moving forward with these two projects. Is anyone from Friends of Nobbska Light who'd like to say a word or two?
Brian Nickerson, Lakeview Avenue, and I'm president of the Friends of Nobbska Light. Just a quick history, this goes back two years ago, two years ago, in January, the Coast Guard started making noise about the possibility of accessing the, the lighthouse property. And in February, the next month, Woods Hole Community Association, chaired by Catherine O'Brien-Bumpus, held a community meeting at the community hall in Woods Hole that was standing room only. And I think the acclamation there was that we wanted to maintain Nobbska under local control. Subsequent to that, probably two years ago this month, the four historic preservation agencies in town, nonprofits, the Woods Hole Community Association, that has three buildings, the Historical Society, the Falmouth Historical Society, which has all its buildings, the museums on the green, Historic Highfield, that manages that property for the Town of Falmouth, and the Woods Hole Historical Museum, which has also historic properties, got together. And none of the four felt that they had the capability of actually managing the property itself and operating it because they have enough things going on themselves, but they thought a consortium of the four entities with the involvement of the town would be the right way of going, and that the town would have the license, and the four organizations would form a new organization called the Friends of Nobbska Light, which did happen. And that would be under a memorandum of understanding with the town, with the town holding the license. Shortly thereafter, the letter of interest was requested from the Coast Guard, it was submitted by the town with the friends' support. Shortly thereafter, we were asked to provide a master plan, which the five entities, the town and the four organizations, worked on, and that was submitted. And I think Mr. Suso would report that the Coast Guard came back saying it was the best one they'd ever seen. Isn't that correct?
Indeed, they did.
And so they did approve it, early, early part of this past year, and we are now ready to take action. If there's any questions, I would report that the, every one of you on this, at this table have either individually or collectively played a major role in supporting this project from beginning to end. Last week, Board of Directors of the Friends of Nobbska Light unanimously approved the execution of the memorandum of understanding that was provided by Mr. Duffy and Mr. Suso. So we're very, very pleased with this. We're probably going to have a drink after this to celebrate, and we hope you will approve both documents. Are there any questions?
So the first document we're talking about is the actual license that is with the Coast Guard. Any questions, discussions about this license? It's a fairly lengthy, hefty document that Mr. Duffy has gone over many, many times and has his support. Ms. Bumpus, would you like to speak on the license?
I, I would just like, once, once you are all set, to say you can find more information about the Friends of Nobbska on the web at nobbskallake.org, and Friends of Nobbska Light, and on Facebook, and on Twitter, if you'd like to follow us there, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment, if I may? As town manager, I just want to acknowledge what a great privilege it's been to work with Brian, Catherine, the entire team of leaders in our town's nonprofit organizations in stepping up the way that they have in such a public-spirited way for such an extraordinary purpose. And it's really been an honor and a privilege to work with such a motivated group and one with such leadership, working also with Town Council Frank Duffy. As Brian has mentioned, it's been a labor of love for many, many months, and the Coast Guard has been extraordinary and very complimentary in the thoroughness and quality of the application, as, as been noted. So, I mean, I look forward... So, I mean, I look forward to this with great anticipation, and I'm thankful to have an involvement in it that I have, and look forward to it continuing to further evolve. And I certainly highly recommend this to the board, and again, my thanks for the great opportunity to work with such extraordinary people.
Any other comments on the license?
Motion to approve the execution of the license.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. So, that deals with the United States Coast Guard license, and now we have to approve the memorandum, we have the choice to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Friends of Falmouth, the Friends of Nobbska Light. The first license is where the town takes responsibility, and then we pass it right on to the friends to actually do all the work. Mr. Patterson?
Not having had a chance to actually read the memorandum of understanding, could we at least have a kind of an overview of exactly what the agreement represents?
That might best come from the friends' organization. Provide that summary paraphrasing. Memorandum of Understanding says the town holds the license, we do all the work. Actually, it goes more than that. Some of the things, for example, we're going to be doing a lot of improvements on the site. We're going to need not only the approval of the town, we'll also need the approval of the Coast Guard, we'll also need approval of the National Park Service because of the National Lighthouse Preservation Act, we'll also need the approval of the State Historic Preservation Officer, otherwise known as the SHIPO, and probably is a few I've forgotten. I do want to mention this, one of our town residents sitting over here named Jeff Thomas, coincidentally, he's a member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary. I can't say he's here representing the Coast Guard Auxiliary because he could kill me, he might be able to do it. But I just want to say how supportive the Coast Guard Auxiliary, and specifically Jeff, in this whole process. And I know that the Coast Guard Auxiliary plans to individually, maybe not as an organization, play a large role in the future of Nobbska Light. So, I guess I'd rather answer any questions about the MOU. It's a very short document, it's only two or three pages, and essentially it says what I just said, but in longer words. Frank, did I miss anything?
A major piece of it is that the friends will make it available for, one of the requirements is that the building must be available for the public for educational purposes and things like that, and that's something that the friends are working forward to make sure that there will be times that people can get into it and be able to appreciate and enjoy it.
And I think that was the understanding from the very beginning that you guys would do all the work.
It'll be, actually, there'll be greater public access from here on in than there has been in the past, because the entire site will be open to the public.
Mr. Patterson?
If that's what it says, I can assure the public, having attended many of the Friends of Nobbska Light organizing meetings, that this is an active group, and to kind of piggyback on top of Julian's comments, I mean, I have every confidence that this is going to be an icon of Falmouth that we're going to all be very proud of and look forward to actually being able to visit and enjoy from an educational perspective. So, I'm very much in favor of this.
I also expect this to be a model for what other towns do to maintain and save lighthouses when it comes up, that they follow what this town has done with local entities in the area to keep it going. Ms. Muffin?
I just remember one of the first meetings at the community center in Woods Hole, and it seemed to me that all the obligations the federal government was laying on this project, it seemed impossible. And the other part that I thought it would take at least a decade after I listened to them, because every time you thought you had something that was common sense, or something that made sense, the federal government had a reason why you couldn't do it. And then there seemed to be so many people that were in line to sign off and to read and then to write some more. So, I absolutely congratulate you to think that in very short time, I think you've accomplished a minor miracle with the U.S. government.
Of the collective members of the Board of Directors here, the Town of Falmouth.
I think you have.
And we will have obstacles along the way, bumps on the road, but we're going to get through it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, with all that said?
I move approval of the memorandum of agreement for Nobbska Light with the Friends of Nobbska Light organization.
Second.
Motion second. Memorandum of understanding with the Friends of Nobbska Light.
Thank you.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it. Congratulations. Our agenda goes on, so we won't be joining you for that drink right now, but. Next item on our agenda is a wind turbine discussion. This was a placeholder in the case that these only board appeals actually made and published a decision on Saturday. Since they did not, we will actually not be having any discussion on it, since there's nothing that we can actually discuss at this point. We'll now move on to our next hearing. This is the Chapter 207 of the Code of Falmouth hearing, the use of town-owned property for a solar project. And anytime we're going to use town-owned property for a municipal project, we must hold a public hearing and give the public a chance to comment on it. Start off with Mr. Glasser or Mr. Fox, who's going to introduce? Mr. Glasser, from the EDIC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the Board of Selectmen. My name is Michael Glasser, I'm the chairman of the Town of Falmouth EDIC, and with me this evening, I want to introduce Emma Kozak. She's the manager of solar development for Citizens Energy Corporation, the developer that we selected to build a solar at the landfill project for us.
Thank you, Michael. As Michael said, I'm Emma Kozak, manager of solar at Citizens Energy.
I'm going to have to interrupt you, because I do have to read this, the public hearing notice into the record.
Oh, sure, please do.
And I'd like to do so. That is, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Chapter 207 of the Code of Falmouth on Monday, March 7, 2016, at 7:55 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the quest of the Board of Selectmen to use town-owned property for a solar project. The affected property is a portion of the former town landfill located off of Blacksmith Shop Road and shown on the Sechers Maps as 1601-015-000 and 1601-008-C-000. Interested parties may review the file in the hearing at the Selectmen's office. This was published in the paper Friday, February 19th and Friday, February 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Citizens was selected, as Michael said, we are selected to develop, finance, build, own and operate the solar PV array at the landfill here. And so, what I want to do is just kind of show you guys the layout, kind of talk about some of the visual impacts. I do apologize, I actually thought we were going to have more time, so I'm going to try our best to condense our presentation in the, to try to be time-sensitive here. So, I'm certainly available for as many questions as anybody has, you know, afterwards. So, I'm actually going to turn this over to our engineers and let them kind of speak to the project layout, and then I'll address the PowerPoint that you see up here that will give us a visual representation of what the solar project will look like. So, our engineers that we work with are tie-in bond, and I'll turn it over to Brian Huntley.
Good evening. I'll be quick as well, but I want to give you kind of an overview of the intended approach. The project is in, oh, look at that. The project is intended to be constructed in two phases. Phase one consists of, I don't know where I can go.
Take the mic with you. Yeah, thanks.
All right. Phase one consists of, it's approximately four megawatts DC, which is three megawatts AC of power. The entire landfill parcel is approximately 55 acres, the actual cap landfill itself is approximately 40. Where we're proposing the development is on the relatively flatter areas on the landfill. Yeah, is that better? Sorry. There's some glare, I can drop it down a little lower if that's easier.
You need to, that's good.
That works, too. As you can see, the intended access is going to be off the end of the paved area here from the transfer station. There's a construction access road that will be built, allowing access to the landfill. Like I said, the first phase is actually the furthest, closest to the transfer station. And then the second phase of the project, once that's been approved for the interconnection through the grid, would be another additional two megawatts DC or a one and a half megawatt AC, which would essentially fill all of the developable areas on the site. And by developable areas, we're talking about the areas on the site that are less than approximately 10% grade. You know, I don't want to use up too much time here, so I'll let kind of Emma go right into her presentation from there.
And I apologize, I don't think I did an appropriate introduction, but one thing I would like to highlight is that during this process, we did work very closely with Weston and Sampson, which is the landfill engineer that the town works with to do all of their existing DEP monitoring and compliance activities. They've got a great historical knowledge of the site. We were able to, and they actually acted as the third-party engineer to review our designs and our calculations and everything like that. So, I think that was actually a process that worked really well. They came to, we sat down with the Mass DEP early on to kind of present the project, get their feedback before submitting an application to Mass DEP, and Weston and Sampson was at that meeting as well. So, we do have our Mass DEP permit in place, and we have a number of conditions that we have to meet in order to build on the site. So, all of the construction on the site is very sensitive of the fact that this is a landfill. There are certain precautions we have to take on this site that are special to a landfill, such as low-ground pressure equipment. You know, all of the equipment is ballasted, meaning there's no trenching at this site, you know, there's the landfill cap. It is the foremost priority out here that the landfill cap integrity remain, that we do nothing to compromise that landfill cap, that the environmental safety out here is first and foremost. And our operations and maintenance plan reflects that. So, without further ado, why don't we kind of walk through the, what this thing is actually going to look like? The great thing about this site, well, let me talk about this slide first. So, this just kind of gives you an idea of how tall the panels are compared to some objects that we're used to seeing in everyday life. So, compared to a pickup truck, you know, the, a man who's five foot eight, you know, I think that's the average height of a man, stop sign. So, these panels will be two panels high, meaning, you know, one panel kind of laid on top of the other one, on top of a concrete footing. So, those final two images over there are the dimensions of the solar panel. And they will sit in, Brian, is it five or six panels across?
I think it's, I think it's six.
Six panels. So, they're two panels high, six panels across, and we've got, we call that a table, so we've got, you know, rows of those tables kind of going, going across. You can go to the next slide, actually, next one. So, this is just a reference of, you know, we took pictures from all over the site to give you an idea of where it's going to look at, look like from different angles. So, if I can do this, see if this works. So, this is kind of our reference figure, and I'll point. So, we started here in the industrial park, and a lot of this is just Google Earth imagery that we, street view that we took. These blue arrows are actually where we took, where we did visual rendering, so we actually put it into a software program, put the panels on there, and said, what is this going to look like, you know, when we model it? So, we'll walk, we'll start from A, we'll go clockwise all the way around to M. So, oop, back one. Yeah, so A, this is, so the great thing about this site is that it's actually, you know, first of all, it's a landfill, it's, you know, it's a site that we can't develop for anything else, but also it's very visually protected already. There's actually berms and trees and everything really surrounding, and even though it's a landfill and it's, it's a pretty big space, it actually sits kind of below all the access, all the roads surrounding it. So, your line of sight when you look out, you don't, it's surprisingly, for how big it is, it's very, you don't really notice it a whole lot. So, again, this is from the industrial park, we can go to the next one, B, following around here. So, yeah, just another picture looking, yeah, this is from, yeah, that road up on the industrial. We can go to C. And so, from this point on the landfill, we're up in this corner here, and so, we're going to have most of our construction trailers and things like that, and we've coordinated with the DPW, they're comfortable with us putting our construction up here on this top part. And so, this picture is from this corner. And so, we're not, and bottom line is, we're not going to be impacting the transfer station day-to-day operations. I know there's that take-it-or-leave-it garage over here, so, you know, none of those, for the daily person going in and out of the landfill, shouldn't be impacted. We'll be kind of focusing our efforts up here. Okay, so number, so D, letter D. So, this is that when you drive in and you have to stop at that little hut right there and check in, that's kind of the angle we're looking at here. So, really, from the transfer station, if you're going to drop off your recyclables, that's really the time you're going to see the project the most. And so, if we go to the next one, this is the visual rendering that we did, so those are the panels up there. So, as you're driving in, this is what it's going to look like. So, you will be seeing, seeing the backs of the panels. South is facing, you know, the opposite direction of what we see here. So, again, this is, this is the most visible point when you're admiring the sculpture garden. Okay, we can go to the next one. This is, you know, the driveway as you enter it. Again, there's a lot of trees. We can go to the next one. You know, this is Thomas B. Landers Road. Now, granted, this is a summertime picture where all the foliage is on, but still, that's quite a thick forest there, relatively speaking. We can go to G. You know, kind of more of the same, just a different angle from Blacksmith Shop Road. Here is where we, we definitely, we took a lot of pictures in this area, because this is where the most citizens would potentially be impacted. We have this development here on Pilot's Way, and there's actually one house. So, we specifically took this angle because there's a house right here, and, but that house, as you could probably imagine, I mean, there's like a high-tension wire that goes here in a landfill. They've actually done a pretty good job already of creating visual obstruction prior to solar ever being there. So, I think we can kind of see that here. And as you can see, there's like a berm that exists along Thomas, is this Thomas B. Landers? No, this is Blacksmith Shop Road. There's a berm that kind of exists already. So, again, the site is pretty, pretty protected. We can go to the next one. So, this is that house on Pilot's Way, the very furthest house here. So, this is the house that would be the most impacted visually. And so, and this is a wintertime picture, we just took this picture recently, so they can, you know, again, we can see a lot of trees here, but they can see that landfill. So, we did do a visual rendering, if you want to go to the next slide. We did a visual rendering for this house specifically, because they, they will be able to see the project the most, and so you can kind of see the, the blue panels in the background there. If you flip to the next picture, oop, did we go, I thought we had another picture of that house in the summertime. No. Well, if there was a picture of that house in the summertime, you can't, you actually can't see the, you can't see the landfill from that house in the summer with all the foliage on it. So, it actually is nice to go out and take pictures this time of the year, because this is kind of worst-case scenario, there's, it's the most visible. So, again, we're kind of going further down Blacksmith Shop Road. This is actual, a rendering, if you can see the blue panels, there's like a thin, again, this is one of the more visual points where you could see it potentially as a local citizen driving by, so we did a visual rendering from this angle. So, you know, again, like I said, the landfill actually kind of sits far below, so even though it's such a big site, the panels, you know, they're kind of hard to make out, you know, unless you're, you're really looking for it. So, it will be, you know, probably visible from this short section of road, but everywhere else, there seems to be a lot of trees.
Any chance of reflection or glare when the sun is in the west?
I'll let Brian speak to that, actually, he's my glare expert.
In general, what we found, and what the industry is finding, that there's a lot of glare studies that have been done, and the glare associated with these panels is generally less than siding on houses, in fact. So, the way the solar panels work is they, you know, absorb the sun, absorb the energy, and turn it into electricity. So, if the panels weren't as efficient as they are, there would probably be more glare than there is. The only time we're seeing glare issues are in, you know, some very, very specific cases where it's very close to potentially a highway in exactly the right direction, where you do have a late afternoon, you know, type of a glare coming off of it as you're headed in the right direction. Because of the distance that you are away from these, for any of the roads around here, we wouldn't anticipate any glare at all to be an issue. And even, you know, on top of that, there is very little glare that actually comes off the panels.
Thank you.
So, moving along, and we can, you know, we can kind of go through these next ones quickly. I think, you know, again, we're just kind of seeing what it looks like. Again, this is a wintertime picture, how much... Again, this is a wintertime picture, how much.
It's a winter commute.
Yep. Yep. So this one, we kind of got in there a little bit more. I think that's the last picture from this, that southern angle there. So I think that concludes our presentation. I'm definitely open to Q and A if anybody has any more specific questions for us.
Ms. Lynn?
I just had a question about the road. What type of a road is it, and what type of vehicles would use it, I mean, in terms of size or whatever?
The construction of the access road that's actually on the landfill, we follow solid waste regulations and solid waste guidelines. So what we're, what we're going to be doing is essentially, as Emma described, a ground-up construction. There's no intention to excavate into the landfill at all. So for the access roads, what we do is we'd roll out a woven fabric first, and then there's gravel and crushed stone that go on top of that. And I don't remember the actual thickness, I think it's 18 inches on this site that we're proposing. And the industry standard is that you need a three-foot separation between the membrane liner and the actual truck loads. So by design, we're, we're building that at 42 inches, so there's some room for some rutting and some, you know, a little bit of wear in the road before we get to that three-foot thickness. And the vehicles that are on there is, in, in the DEP guidelines, when you have that three-foot separation, you can use any vehicles that are legally registered to run along the road. So in this case, it'll be, you know, tri轴s and dump trucks that will actually bring material in to build the road. Once the road is constructed, it'll probably be some box trucks, box trucks for some equipment. There's a potential that there could be some semi-trailers that come out here for when the panels and the racking and those types of things are delivered. But the, the access road is actually designed and has been approved, because the permit has already been approved by DEP, for that use and for those loads. And it's a very common approach, very common construction throughout Massachusetts on landfills. This is being handled the exact same way.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone from the public who'd like to comment on the use of this property for that? Should I?
Just a quick one. Build on Precinct Five. A question to present is, I heard there's 3,800 applications for the grant money currently in the process, and where does Falmouth stand as far as getting that money? And the second part of that question is the rate setting. Who says?
That's going to be our next conversation in about five minutes. Right now, the conversation is just on the use of the property for solar, this isn't the lease, this isn't the rates.
Okay, then one comment. There's no moving parts on the solar panel, correct?
I've asked that question, but I'd love to hear it again from citizens, that these are not moving panels.
That's correct. The proposed system out here is a fixed-tilt system, so the concrete balance blocks sit on top of some, some potential leveling stone, crushed stone, and then the racking is stationary on top of that. And the panels themselves are solid-state, so there's no, there's no moving parts on top of, you know, the racks are associated with the panels themselves.
Any other one want to comment on the use of the town landfill for a solar energy project? All right. I would entertain a motion to close the hearing on the use of this property.
Still moved. Second?
Motion, a second to close the hearing. And that's, we don't actually have to take any vote beyond that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then the hearing is closed. And we have a requirement that we hold this hearing for the town of Falmouth, and we have done so, we, so we are actually now free to be able to use the property because we held that hearing. So our next item is discussion and taking action on the landfill solar lease. Thank you very much for coming.
Yes.
Pressing the argument, it was fantastic. Mr. Sisso, we've authorized you to negotiate our lease, so would you like to get our...
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've given the, presented the board a summary, a two-page term sheet on the proposed arrangement for the landfill solar lease, and it's pretty well self-explanatory. I can walk through all the details, but a number of them, I know the board is generally familiar. There's, there are two pieces to this. The first is a four-megawatt portion to be followed if all approvals are secured with a two-megawatt, and that was described in the previous hearing as well. And there, there's land lease revenue that would go 100 percent to the EDIC in the first two years as proposed, then would be split 50/50 beginning in year three. Beyond that, there is a personal property tax, a pilot payment to be subject to discussion and negotiation that would be forthcoming to the town once that would be determined. And finally, obviously, the important issue is some significant cost savings on energy costs to the town and the schools as well. And that is basically a 20-year package, and I know that Town Council Frank Duffy has been involved, working with our colleagues at the EDIC, in the details of both the solar lease and the power purchase agreement as well. And Frank would join me in answering questions about that, as well as representatives of the EDIC.
Ms. Moran?
Sure, thank you. I am the board's representative on the EDIC, and I just think it probably makes sense just to have a little bit of a refresher on the numbers, if you could, Mike?
Sure. Thank you again, Michael Galasso, Chairman of the Falmouth EDIC. And I want to take a moment, if I could, to introduce some of the other members of the EDIC are here, because there's been a lot of work that's been put into this project, and we haven't had an opportunity really to thank all the members of the EDIC who've spent a considerable amount of time and energy on this project. So I'm not sure if Dave Eldredge is here, the Vice Chairman of the EDIC, Jim Fox, who many of you know, Jay Zavala, who's our clerk, Chris Langlis, who's our treasurer, and then of course, Sleckman-Su Moran, that's the members of the EDIC. I also want to thank the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager and the Town Attorney for all their time and effort over the last few weeks in putting together and negotiating the, the land lease. So what we wanted to do is quickly review what was presented to the town meeting at, on November 10th, where the town meeting almost unanimously approved three articles for this project. So these are the projections that we presented at the town meeting. And what we projected at that time was that the town was going to save from a six-megawatt project, our most optimistic was $451,422. That's what the most optimistic projection at that time, this is before we issued our RFP or selected anyone to, to develop it. This was just off of our homework, our projections, Jim Fox did a lot of work on this. So $451,422 was the highest that we projected that the town would save from this project. And that included the savings from Eversource and also the lease and the pilot payments, $451,000. Jim, if you go on to the next slide, please. So if you look at the total financial benefit in year one to the town, without any revenue from the lease, $489,000, 489.34. That's from a four-megawatt system. So what we're delivering is more savings with less power. So I think we've done a great job and exceeded the projections that we presented to town meeting, and I think that's important. The other thing that you'll notice on the first column, where we start with $425,700, you'll see in the second year that the amount of savings goes down by 20 percent. Now, the consultant, these are numbers put together by a consultant that both the town and the EDIC hired. So why would it go down 20 percent? Well, the consultant estimated that the cost of electricity is going to go down 20 percent next year. I'm not sure where that comes from, but, so it's a very conservative projection, a 20 percent reduction in the cost of electricity of what the town would pay if we still were with Eversource. So that's why the savings go down. But of course, if we don't see a 20 percent savings in electricity and on all our, our power bills next year, which I don't think we've seen any reduction probably the last 20 years, then the savings would, would go down because this is projected against what we would be paying to Eversource versus what we'll be paying to, for the power purchase agreement with Citizens Energy. So that's why there is a drastic reduction in years two through years five, then you see that it goes, goes back up. I, I wanted to, to show this so that everyone gets an idea of what we've been able to do in, in this project for, you know, for the town. You know, I think we'll all agree that the EDIC has done a great job taking this town asset, which was a closed, decaying dump, costing us over $80,000 a year, and turning it into a revenue-producing asset that over the term of this lease will conservatively produce 13 and a half million dollars in savings and tax payments. That's if you take the $12,444 and add that to the, the pilot payments, you come out to almost $13 million.
Jim, is this only the four megawatts, or is this the six?
This is just a four. This is just a four-megawatt system.
And why does the lease allocation go up so much?
Why does the lease allocation go up so much? There's an, there, in the lease, there is a accelerator in the lease.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, accelerator into the lease.
Thank you.
So in our negotiations with the town, we had agreed, my understanding, maybe not everyone's understanding, that we would split after year two, the lease payments 50/50. I'm not quite sure, with all the savings that were given to the town, why we're even splitting the lease payment with you. You know, we're, we're providing more than what anyone projected, providing over, you know, close to half a million dollars of savings in the first year. And the EDIC needs revenue to continue its operation and doing all the good things that it's been doing in this community, and to respond to future things in the, in the future. So I, I think that we feel, and members of my board feel, that we've, we've done a good job, and that we ought to look at a different allocation between the EDIC and the town as far as the lease revenue. And we're willing to take on the responsibility of maintaining the property if there's a more equitable distribution between the lease revenue between the town and the EDIC. So there's been a lot of questions as far as what will the EDIC do with the revenue it receives? Well, first, we'd like to recoup some of the costs we put into this project. Between the amount of time that our members have spent and the costs out of our pocket, we probably got maybe $200,000 into this project. Remember, the town hasn't put any money into this project. The town's going to be receiving all the savings. We'd like to establish a future reserve for the ongoing maintenance or the renovation of the train station that we're working on. We'd like to fund loans to emerging small businesses in Falmouth, and to keep some of the institutions that we already have here, provide incentives for people like, for institutions like NOAA to stay here in our community. We'd like to leverage some of the funds to qualify for grants, to study connecting up our community, to Open Kay. Those are all projects that we have in the works. We'd like to help a nonprofit like Community Health Center, which moved out of Falmouth and built a $14 million facility in Mashpee that now employs 150 people. We'd like to help them expand here in Falmouth. They've already approached us about expanding their facility here. That's a company that we lost a number of years ago. So we have more projects and opportunity to help our town, to help our citizens, to help our employees, to help our employers, than we have resources for. And more importantly, the EDIC knows how to leverage those resources into projects like the solar, the landfill project, where we took the risk and we invested $150,000 of our cash and created a return of over $13 million in savings. That's close to a 100-time return on our investment. So again...
Since you raised the question about this, your money, let's be very clear where that money came from. I believe it came from selling town land that the town gave to the EDIC, EDIC to sell for their purposes.
That's absolutely true. But the town...
It was town assets that paid for the, this whole project.
It was town assets that through town meeting was transferred to the EDIC, that the EDIC sold to firms that created jobs and opportunities in our community. That's the purpose of the EDIC.
Right, but I just, I take a little bit of objection to you saying it came out of our pocket. And I'd say, if you want to say our, our, our pocket, it came out of the town's pocket, yes. To say it came out of EDIC's pocket, it sounds like you and Sue and Jim paid for it yourself. Is the EDIC paying for it out of town-sponsored funds?
Well, out of funds that the EDIC has, because I want to make sure it's clear that people don't think that the funds that the EDIC has in their checking account is the same as the funds that you have in your checking account.
No, but it came from the town.
The original, what originally funded the EDIC, when the EDIC was formed, was land that was approved by town meeting to give to the EDIC for the purpose of creating employment opportunities in our community. That's what economic development corporations do.
Absolutely.
And typically, when economic development corporations or other nonprofits, which we are sort of a nonprofit, lease land, whether it's for housing or other economic development, from a town, they typically pay maybe a dollar a year. I mean, that's a very typical scenario in order for the town to participate in creating opportunities. That's why we think that's a equitable situation here. Where here, we're creating a big savings for the towns, for the schools, and we enjoy doing that. I think Jim and everyone on our board will say that it's been a great journey to get here tonight, and I think all we're looking for is for the future of the EDIC. This is a big opportunity for it, we work very hard for it. We want to make sure that the EDIC, and I think we all do, will continue with its missions in the years to come, long before, long after we're a part of that organization.
Ms. Moran?
So what are you asking for specifically?
Well, you know, there was a, a very good proposal put forth, creating a, a town economic development fund, that we at one time agreed would split the proceeds of the land lease between the EDIC and, and that, and that fund. That was rejected for whatever reason, not really clear. And so where we ended up with and what we agreed to was a, first two years was 100 percent to the EDIC, and then after year, starting year three, there was a 50/50 split. But if you look at that 50/50 split, it's about $34,000 a year. The cost of mowing the lawn, which is something that we would have to do, is somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 a year, so it really leaves us with a little bit of funds left. So what we had talked about was that whatever the cost was for mowing that lawn, that we would get our credit back for that. I, I'm not even sure, sitting here tonight, standing here tonight, that that even is equitable for us. But I'll leave it to some of the other members who want to speak this evening to address that.
Any other questions from the board? I guess I'll go back to the numbers you came to town meeting with.
Yep.
On the, that was based on six megawatts. And I just worry a little bit that that number of the town benefit was assuming that the town could actually use all six megawatts. Us all six, the entire power.
Yes.
And we do not have that, we don't have that demand, so...
That's because...
I think that number would have been a little, you know, if we actually went with that, that number that was promised, wouldn't we actually have come to fruition on that formula, because we wouldn't be using as much power as was, as thought so.
We've got to remember, this is a projection that I did on these numbers here, and as you can see, we're...
You got to get a microphone.
We're talking about a loving, yes, that is absolutely true. But when we put it out to bed, this number's now seven cents. Okay, we, this is, these projections are far greater and better for the town than we ever imagined. Mike was always after me, I was always saying, these are going to be the numbers, and Mike was always telling me, keep them low, keep them low, keep them low. We fought that for a couple of years. But, you know, this, these represents 20, 30, and 40 percent savings off the cost of electricity at the time. We're projecting out in the future, and we thought they were going up. The current energy, people now are saying the costs are going down, so there is a difference of opinion about energy. But I've been doing a lot of modeling for a long time, I've never modeled 10 percent drops in electricity. I usually model 1 percent a year for 20 years, and that's the way we did this. And I'm fairly confident that the town, that these numbers are still low, and I think the electric costs could be easily 25 or 30 cents in the near future, and the town will be paying seven, and the savings could double again. So there's some tremendous numbers here, just want to make, that's where I came from. There was a lot of projections, and of course, we didn't hit everything, but we were low on everything.
Questions from the board? Mr. Patterson?
Yes, you mentioned about the, the mowing, and there's going to be an additional maintenance cost for you. How did you come up with that estimate of 10 to 15,000? I mean, what's, what's involved in this mowing? I mean, you can't... I mean, you can't...
We've never, we've never...
You can't mow underneath of the panels, right?
Yeah. Well, there's two components of it, and one, we've, we've never mowed a lawn in a landfill before, so we went and asked Citizens Energy, who has a number of solar out at landfills, and they went to their consultant and asked them for a number, and that's where that number came from, from their folks that currently mow. Now, citizens will be responsible for mowing within the solar field. That additional cost is for the area outside. So, until we build phase two, there's more of an area that has to be mowed than there is if we were to build all six. So, it shrinks down as we build.
Continue. Up, why are we mowing more than we're currently mowing in the landfill area?
Well, we're not. We'd be mowing pretty much the same area, but it's a different piece of equipment that the town doesn't have that needs to be used on that mowing area now.
Different from what we're using right now?
Yes.
And what's the reason?
Because of the box turtle. The grass has to be cut at a certain height, and the equipment that we have, and Pete's here, and he can address that, needs to be, the current equipment that we have won't meet that requirement.
But we've been mowing with that current equipment.
Yes.
If we were to continue, we'd have to upgrade our own equipment, is what you're telling me.
If we build a solar, I believe that requirement goes along with the solar project.
It's habitat.
So, what, is that correct?
Yeah, it's by the DEP requirement for solar. You then have to have...
Triggered new environmental requirements.
Okay. If we didn't do the solar, we wouldn't have to do mowing differently than we do now.
Now, I've offered to go out there and mow it, because it's pretty good money, but I have to get the equipment. So, but that's, that's really the...
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, what we're talking about are components of a lease, it sounds to me like, but we don't have a lease in front of us. So, are we expected to vote on these components tonight?
Mr. Sue, we've, we've authorized Mr. Sue so to negotiate the lease, and so these are just some of the, these are still some of the points that he's looking for some direction for, and these are the questions that still are in negotiation, and he'd like some direction from the board as to how he, we should proceed, how he should proceed.
The board's so direct, pardon me, Mr. Chairman, this evening, then we could conclude the matter. If you need however more time, then whatever your preferences...
Well, I guess, I'm not sure what our objective really is here in terms of what we, I guess, what we would be willing to contribute toward this lease, or what we are expecting from the lease in terms of income, you know, from, from the savings of the solar, and then what the costs are, and how much of those costs that we should be responsible for. I don't know, I guess I'm not really clear about that.
That summarizing the term sheet, the, you know, the concept is that you're leasing the entire property to EDIC with the, you know, the general understanding that that would include their taking over the responsibility for it. Heather can elaborate on that.
Well, I think this really is quite narrow at this point. The, the work that the EDIC has done really is phenomenal, and I, I think Jim Fox particularly did a really tremendous job in the structuring of the RFP that has produced a very advantageous rate, which is fixed, and it's not a subject of negotiation. The only terms that remain uncertain, and if we can go back to the slide that has the town, schools, and EDIC column, and you actually have it on the back of the sheet that you have in front of you?
Mm-hmm. Sure, well, I can talk about it.
They have, they are in front of us as well.
Slide three.
One, two, three. There you go.
Right there.
Yeah, so you see the last two columns where it says lease allocation?
Mm-hmm.
There's a commitment of approximately a hundred thousand dollars associated with the entire six kilowatts, am I saying the right words? Megawatts of energy relative to the, the full six megawatts of solar. Under the four-megawatt agreement, that's about six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. You can see on the column, in the first two years, the town is proposing that the EDIC earn one hundred percent of that revenue, in recognition of the tremendous work that they've done to this point, recouping nearly almost everything that they've invested from the funds available to the EDIC. The remaining years of that lease, we're proposing fifty percent, fifty-fifty share, which is what we'd heard previously from the board, is what you viewed as, as an equitable proportion. Those first two years, we're in recognition of both their contribution to get this off the ground, the work that they've done, as well as the fact that at least, while there's four megawatts, there's a, there's a hefty bill associated with the mowing contract. When the project moves to another two megawatts, which I think we're all very hopeful will happen, that cost of mowing goes down. So, really, the, what the board needs to provide guidance to the town manager is what your lease allocation goals are for the project from years one to twenty.
And the lease allocation goes up if we go to four megawatts, six megawatts.
Correct.
Automatically goes up, correct.
Automatically goes up, no matter how much power is produced, once there's six megawatts of panels on there, that goes up by twenty-two thousand dollars per group. Sue?
And I, I just want to kind of add to what Heather said, and I, I thought that summary was just perfect, which is, you know, we're, we're pretty much down to the numbers and allocating between the town and EDIC, just these lease payments, which are, if you look at a hundred percent, about sixty-seven thousand. That's what we're down to. We've already gotten the, you know, we're, the numbers in terms of the huge benefit for the town, which is going to carry literally for twenty years forward, those are, you know, a little bit aside from what we're discussing now. We're really discussing a validation and recognition of the EDIC's monetary abilities going forward, and it's really kind of a microcosm of how this board recognizes its committees, that, where we, you know, we have folks that volunteer, lots of professionals who spend a lot of time really volunteering over a number of years, and who put together the right team of experts and consultants, and in the EDIC's case, because it is funded by the town, and it really is, you know, in many respects, it's a partnership with the town, because there are a lot of things the town can use the EDIC to accomplish, you know, and so in this instance, it's really a matter of, with all of the, you know, the benefits for the town have already been set aside, this is, this is a corner of the funds that we're talking about, and, and there are two elements to it. One is, you know, the lease payments, the sixty-eight thousand dollars or so you see on the top at a hundred percent. And then there's, when you're talking about mowing at, you know, just to, to give a number, say fifteen thousand to start with, that, you know, that could be a huge chunk of the sixty-eight thousand, and that would therefore leave the EDIC with a smaller pot of funds to work with. So, I think what the chair was suggesting is that, you know, in a best-case scenario, the lease payments would be a hundred percent to EDIC, and the EDIC would then just completely take over the mowing obligations that the town just doesn't have the particular equipment for. So, I, I think that's one, that's sort of at one end of the spectrum, and I think that what he also said was that fifty percent seems to really leave the EDIC with, with less resources to do its mission going forward. So, I think this is, in some respects, an opportunity for the board to recognize, you know, what it, similar to what its committees do, the EDIC is its own corporation, but there are some parallels.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, you know, I hear that, but I, I know that there are volunteer committees in this town that don't expect to be compensated, and it kind of bothers me when I hear you say two hundred thousand dollars invested by EDIC if you include the time of the members of the EDIC, which are voluntary. And, you know, you look at the three hundred committee, you look at people like Betsy Gladfeller, who are pursuing these grants for environmental, you look at the Water Quality Management Committee and the number of hours that they put in, and they're not asking for compensation for their time. You know, I understand that you want seed money to invest in other projects that are going to, I'm a little bothered by the fact that this is not a project that's going to actually create new jobs going forward in the future, and neither is the renovations. As much as I respect you guys for pursuing this and benefiting the town in terms of income revenues to the town itself to pay for its many services and, and costs, the bus depot is the same thing. It's not an investment that's going to lead to jobs and essentially economic opportunity in the future, so I'm conflicted. You know, I want to, I want to compensate you for the money that you've invested in it. I'd, I'd like to see an arrangement where we can maybe cover a little bit more of these maintenance costs, you know, but, you know, I don't feel like we should be basically funding the EDIC at this point until we see what projects actually are being proposed to be carried out and the potential benefit that's pursuing the, the mission of the EDIC, which is basically economic growth, meaning jobs and, and opportunities for businesses in, in the community. I mean, there's a certain trustless kind of thing that, that just conflicts me a little bit. When we have a chance to sign a twenty-year lease, I'd much rather come back at some point and revise the lease, because you're coming up with a project that looks like we could really invest those funds for the benefit of the future economy of, of, of our town.
Ms. Flynn?
Well, I was just going to say, I was on the EDIC for fifteen years, from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand and eight, and that's long before you were there and moved on to the solar project. At the time I was there, our mission was really to sell land in the tech park, because it hadn't been sold. And that was the whole idea, was to sell the land in the tech park, build a tech park with companies that were going to benefit the, the community, both in their, in their business plans, as well as in why they were formed in the first place. And that was able to be accomplished, for the most part, over those years. So, as a result of that, the EDIC had some funds from the sale. There was a certain percentage of those funds that came back to the EDIC that allowed it to continue and complete its mission to sell the lots. And now, that all happened, so I went off in two thousand and eight or seven, or whatever year it was, and then, and then your projects go on. And I do understand that you need to have seed money, that you need to have funds in order to be able to grow, in order to be able to fulfill your mission. You can't have it without money. I think the question, and this is a good project, I think at this point, to divert some of those funds to the, to the EDIC, so you can continue to move forward on your mission. I guess the question is, how much of that money do we, do we split, is the way I look at it? But I absolutely, totally, completely understand the mission for after, when I first went on the EDIC, by the way, it was in ninety-three, and the former mayor of Boston, John Collins, was on the EDIC then, and I got to tell you, that was like a life experience to me, when he had just completed all that development in the city of Boston. And those of us who were on the EDIC at the time, it was like going to school. I mean, he really, he taught us so much about community development, development and how you go about doing it, but that's another story.
Ms. Moffitt?
I think my first question is that when you say there is a savings of four twenty-five seven hundred, I'm under town and schools in the chart, and there's a dollar sign in front of it. That isn't actual money. That, that isn't, I mean, there may be, for utilities, electricity in the town of everything that we run, costs a certain amount of money, and what we're going to have in savings that's going to come from the solar is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dol- twenty, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars, but it's really not money.
It is, because you're not writing the check. In other words, if someone brought you, pardon me, Mr. Chair, if someone brings you a hundred dollars in groceries, then you don't have to buy those groceries. So, you have that hundred dollars in your pocket to build a senior center, whatever.
Well, where does the money come from? Where does this, in the sale?
The utility.
And it isn't just saving, it's, it isn't just...
Getting energy for cheaper cost.
Yeah.
The discount.
Okay.
Currently, we pay our energy bills out of distributed accounts across the town. The schools pay its bills, public works, across the town, across the town, the value of those bills is going to come down. So, it isn't in any one, any one department, it's throughout the town, those savings will come down.
And tell me how that happens.
Because instead of paying an energy production charge to Eversource, which would be, I don't know, nineteen cents, I don't know what it is right now, we're going to pay seven point six cents. Sorry, I'm shaping my hand in front of the town manager. You'll, you'll be, you're paying less.
So, every bit of this is just on the advice that you've been given from citizens, and that this is how much that you will, that you will save?
We also had our own consultant review and evaluate citizens' proposals to make sure that we were comfortable with those numbers, and we are.
We're confident with these numbers.
And they're conservative.
Okay. You are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and how much of the property that was called the landfill, or the dump, or whatever you want to call it, how much is EDIC going to use, or how much will they own and the town will not own?
There won't be any ownership. The town will still own it, it'll be a lease, and I think it's about eighty percent.
Yeah, forty-three acres, I think.
And the town will only lease all of it, or you're saying eighty percent of it?
Nearly, forty-three acres, nearly all of it.
And the transfer station will still be there, there'll be parts around it that will still be there far as the town.
So, there is, at another time, there could be another thought for something else to go in there, or?
Not with the topography there.
Okay, all right.
We're using everything, all the usable space.
Okay. How much money is needed from the town to get this project going?
Zero.
Zero.
EDIC did everything.
In fact, EDIC probably wrote checks required for like a hundred thousand or so, at least.
Well, I think the point was very well made about ten minutes ago, that any money that has been transferred or given to EDIC started on the town's side.
It's the same thing.
But I mean, it's, it's town money given to another agency to use. So, it isn't as if it is money that the ED, EDIC had, the town gave the money first.
It was land that was given.
Land, whatever, however it happened.
And it's important to note that if the EDIC ever went out of business, that would all go back to the town, too. And it's, I think it's one...
You're not counting on that.
It's, it's, if I may, just one other point.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Fenner, would you like to say something on that?
Mr. Chairman, before you...
Okay, yep.
Before you do so, to the same question that I mentioned to our chairman, I'm Jay Zavala, the clerk of the FDIC. First annotation that any and all of those resources that the EDIC has, should the corporation ever fold, will revert back to the town. More importantly, the, the observations that the chairman made with regards to some of the initiatives that we're looking at immediately, and some of the things that we hope to go forward on, we're really sort of breaking ground with the FDIC that is starting to be copied in other parts of the country. You mentioned the three hundred committee and other committees of, of the town that go after grants and donations, while the FDIC is taking a different approach. It is self-financing. That's where those resources are going to be used, because we have tried and we have failed in many instances to look for grants that have just haven't come to, through the EDIC. In the meantime, we've had to wait and try to find other means. Having the resources at hand gives us the opportunity to capitalize on the, the objectives that we have, and those resources are being leveraged on behalf of the town. So, ultimately, Mr. Patterson, it does result in not only more jobs, but also job stability and the stable economy of our community.
Mr. Fenner.
Mark Fenner in Precinct Six. Nothing against the benefits of this project, but this is the third time that, I think it's the third time that you've been here, and each time I've found some appreciable arithmetic questions, and I have some, tonight's presentation as well. The first one was, you already touched on it, Mr. Jones, the, the our money thing and it being the town money, I mean, that's, that's a very valid point. But the number you used up there for electricity was fourteen and a half cents, and the current price for electricity is about ten. So, that's a forty-five percent difference. If it's going down twenty percent, which I believe it will, because there's a glut on the worldwide market, then you're looking at a sixty-five percent difference in projected I think that that's something that should be taken note of. You know, it reduces the four hundred thousand dollars down to two hundred thousand dollars, it, it could in effect, if, if prices drop even lower. Also, on the lawn, to, the town mows the lawn at the present time, I understand that with the box turtle regulations, there's a different piece of equipment, but rather than spending all that money and every year, why wouldn't the EDIC just purchase the town? than spending all that money every year, why wouldn't the EDIC just purchase the town the proper lawnmower and let the town continue to mow the lawn? I think that's something that should be considered. And also, as far as your investment, your $200,000 or whatever you put into it, I think every project you should do, you should get all your money back, and I think you should get at least 10% on top of that for your work. Those are just my comments and observations. Thank you.
My concern on the maintenance is, I think to have the town involved in the maintenance package of this doesn't make sense. Whoever we're leasing it to, they should maintain it. I'd be willing to suggest, because I'm the one fighting for 50/50, and originally, we had thought also about a 33/33/33, with 1/3 going to EDIC, 1/3 going to the town, and 1/3 going to the fund that could be available to the EDIC. I guess I was the one who felt that that was going to be more confusing, and would felt that the EDIC was not as interested in that, because the way we were saying it is they would still have to come to us for approval of those funds, and I felt that this was a cleaner package. I'd be willing to consider, suggest to Mr. Su, a 40/60 split, but the reason we're doing that is, and they're taking care of the mowing.
I'd go along with that. A 40/60, and they take care of the mowing?
And that gives, I mean, right now in this plan, it gives them about another $7,000 from what they're getting right now. When, if we go to six megawatts, all of a sudden, it becomes a much bigger benefit than, you know, they don't have to pay for as much mowing, and they're getting 60% of, you know, 6 times 132,000, because it's 6 times 22, which is what the lease is. So it really gives them a very good benefit, but...
Well, actually, I would almost say that I would be willing to go 100% for the first three years, and then 60% thereafter, which would give them a recovery for any capital investment required in equipment, it would compensate them for the funds they've already spent on this project, and then a more equitable, because after that, you're only paying for the labor, you're not paying for the equipment anymore. So I mean, that's another option.
So you're saying, for the first three years, zero, 100?
Yeah.
For the first three years.
I said, the first three years, we already have two.
Zero, 100, and we have 40/60.
Yep.
Why is there such a discrepancy between the second and third year, the 68,000 and the 34?
Because they're splitting it with us at that point.
At that point? Okay.
That's the reason it's a 0 and 100.
So Sam's point is to not split it until after the third year?
Right. And then 40/60.
And actually, I think that 68,000 is the typo, that should be 63/33/3 for the second year. I don't think we get escalations until after that. Not a major change, but...
At least the...
And it grows, when the rent grows, the taxes don't. The taxes are flatlined, they've modeled it, the rent goes up 2% a year.
Is it 2%?
Should the terms stay for 20 years? Should they be revered after 10, or something?
The lease has a provision in it that allows either party to come back with proper notice and discuss.
Since you were doing the major negotiations, any response you have for...
It just allows us to have additional negotiations.
That suggestion?
I'm comfortable with whatever the board prefers. I'm a little confused about why we're going to 64, to go in a third year at 100%.
Well, no, my understanding was that was just going to compensate them for the labor of doing that mowing, that somehow or other wasn't figured into the original project costs, but, or the administrative costs for managing this lease, but I defer to Mr. Colazo for an explanation.
Doing both seems very generous, but, Ms. Moran?
Well, one thing, in turn, there is a lot more mowing for the initial period until Phase Two is completely constructed, so your suggestion actually makes a lot of sense.
I actually, I guess I don't want to do both. I'd be thrilled, I'm okay with doing 0, 100 for the first three, and then 50/50 from then on. Feels fairer to me, it is the town property and releasing it.
40/60, you meant?
No.
50/50.
50, 0 to 100 for the first three, that gives them an additional $34,000 to buy the equipment. I'm still thinking, I'm hoping it's going to be six megawatts, so their mowing price cost is going to go down, and their, so their maintenance won't be that much.
So the 50% in the fourth step, the fourth year?
In the fourth year.
Well, we don't have any motion yet, so...
I'll make a motion, that we do 100% for the first three years, and 50/50 in the years following.
I'll second it.
And have a discussion.
Sue?
I am much more in favor of your original suggestion, which was 60/40 going forward, but I, because I think that was a better recognition of the, you know, the potential use of those funds by the EDIC going forward. That's why I liked your suggestion, and I also liked Sam's suggestion, as I just mentioned, of the three years, because there is going to be, it's really covering some costs of, you know, whatever the estimates were, something like 13,000 or 14,000 to start out with, and then, of course, they'll go less going forward, and we do also have the opportunity to review as need be. I mean, and I think that's incentive for the EDIC to continue to build its, you know, its portfolio of economic assistance. I think that's a very big point.
Go back to 60/40 with me again.
Well, the motion right now is 0, 100 for the first three.
This says 2, but we...
For the first three years, that's the motion right now.
Go back to your reasoning on 60/40.
Okay, my, it was the chair's suggestion, but I think it, what it does is it validates the opportunities for the town to use the EDIC going forward, and the EDIC to assist the town in economic development going forward.
I thought, I thought you had said something else.
Well, but the other thing we could do is in the fourth year, prior to the fourth year, we could take a look at the first three years, you know, when you've had 100%, and say, maybe 50/50 isn't right, maybe based on the numbers that we've had the first three years, we want to change that. We could do that. I mean, we could start out being sort of equal partners, and then if it turns out that the way the numbers are coming in, and the way the project is, is working out, that we might want to change those numbers for the fourth year. I mean, there's always the option.
Yeah, and I, and I actually would invite proposals for additional projects in terms of economic development, which might allow us to come back and be able to justify, you know, changing this percentage around, because you need more money to put into developing some new project opportunity on behalf of the town. So, I mean, I see this as flexible, and something that this isn't going to be, you know, necessarily cast in concrete for the entire 20 years.
And I think, as I said, I think there is provisions in the lease that allows that flexibility at a later time, with approval of the board.
Further discussions, we have motioned on changing it to, for the first three years, 0, 100, and then maintaining 50/50 after that. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Great job, Michael.
And the rest of the board, too. Thank you, I appreciate that.
A little break?
Yes.
We've been sitting here since 6. Would you like to start up at 9 o'clock?
Great.
Brief recess.